Good evening, this is the Town of Calhoun Planning Board Meeting on March 5th, 2013. And it's a little after seven, we're meeting room one.
Uh, under new business, we have a sign permit. Oh, oh, before we, let's, if we could please stand and salute the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
All right, under new business, we have a sign permit for Edible Railroad.
Yes, Brenda's here. Richard, I've met Richard. Um, you'll see in your packet, uh, description, this is really just replacing the sign that's there now at the intersection of North, uh, South Main and Rochester. And then you'll see a little lighting diagram, it's already lit. And then maybe Brenda can explain why they're doing this and what this is all about.
There's been a lot of growth of trees and everything where the sign sits now. So we just want to move the sign approximately six feet closer to Route 58 for, for better visibility. We get a lot of complaints, people missing the sign because of the brush. The sign basically will stay the same, we just want to move it closer to 58. And change the design a little bit.
Still gonna be about the same size?
It will stay the same size.
Okay.
The lighting's gonna stay the same?
Lighting staying the same.
I can use this. Thank you.
So I see no problem with that. Anybody have any questions, comments?
No, I think that's great. Just a question, is it better you to put it forward? Or, or would it save you less money to clean the brush all around it and make the area where the sign is now okay?
We looked at clearing the brush, we still feel even if the brush was all cleared, and it's not our property to clear all that brush.
That, that's enough right there, it's not your property. I just, I was thinking about saving you some money, that's all, and making the area around the sign that you already have nice and instead of having to go to the trouble of, you know, affording to do this.
The other thing is, it's forty, it's forty inches between the road and where the sign is.
So it's gonna be a win-win all around, putting your sign up forward. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve this, uh, sign application for Edible Railroad as presented. They're gonna need a building permit. And they'll probably need an electrical permit, if they're gonna move the sign, they'll have to move the electricity.
Second.
Is a motion in second, those in favor? Aye, aye.
Brenda, I'll process this tomorrow, and Maureen's in at nine, you can walk right over there and get your building permit. I don't know about what they have to do with Tommy, you will?
Um, they'll just have to apply, have their electric show five, electric permit, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, good to see you Brenda.
Now, wasn't that easy? She was very nervous.
It'll be nice to have a new sign out there, too.
I don't think it was you, I think it's the microphone.
All right, under old business, we have receipt of plans Form A, South Main Street.
It's really shouldn't say receipt of plans, um, you received this last week, our last meeting. Come on up Jim, this is the, um, retreat lot off of South Main on the Davidson property. And that last meeting, when you received it, the only question you had of me, and I didn't convey this to Jim, was, um, what relationship this had with the subdivision? And what will it have with this?
Good evening, I'm Jim Pavlik from Outback Engineering. And, um, as you may recall, that prior subdivision was, um, withdrawn without prejudice. So there's no plans on the table at this point to, to do any type of subdivision there. And any future subdivision would have to fully comply with, you know, all applicable subdivision regs, so.
Mr. Chairman, through you.
Go ahead, Will.
Uh, that was, that was my question on that, I couldn't remember if we had moved on that or not. I knew it was at the end of our term and stuff. Um, the only question I have through you, Mr. Chairman, to Jack, um, and I probably should ask this ahead of time, and I apologize for not asking, any outstanding taxes?
No, we, we checked those on the application.
Thank you, I don't have a problem with it, I mean, um, we didn't have that other subdivision that was there, so I don't have any issues with this at all.
Are there any other questions from anyone?
I'd like to make a motion to endorse the, uh, Form A plan for, um, Bowman's Point.
Is a motion, uh, is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Jim would like to take the Mylar, we can do the hard copies later, but if you wouldn't mind signing the Mylar now. Kevin gets the sign his first one.
First one, Kevin.
Congratulations.
Mark J. Rose.
Sorry? I'm losing it to next. Jim, too much X with that.
All right. Thank you, you got it Jim.
Thank you, nice to see you again.
Thank you.
Uh, the next thing is, uh, Temporary Office of Planning and Community Development Secretarial Interviews. We have Taro Savastano and Kathy Kay with us tonight.
Let me give you a little background before you start, um, we received fourteen applications. I interviewed four candidates, and, um, it was a tough decision, but I, I decided on what I consider the two most qualified. And, um, this is your chance to let them tell their story a little bit, maybe ask them questions, okay?
Thank you.
In your packet, I have the, um, the applications, I mean, the, yeah, and the resumes, maybe Tara could start first? Just right up here, Tara. Uh, maybe if you told the board a little bit about yourself and your background, and then let them fire away.
Okay, sure.
Oh, gotta get that mic close to you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Yours at home.
Okay, um, well, I'm new to the area, I'm not from Massachusetts. Um, I'm from California originally, I spent thirty-two years there, twenty years in Wyoming, and now I'm in Massachusetts. I'm out here for family reasons and plan on staying for about fifteen years or so, till retirement. Twenty, twenty-five years, who knows? Um, I've got a background in office administration, I recent, my most recently was at a community college in Cheyenne, Wyoming. It's a, a small town, not as small as Carver, but population about fifty thousand. Um, Wyoming's very rural, there's, there's nothing out there, there's, there's five hundred thousand people in the whole state. So I've come out here and, um, it's, it's different, but I've been here before for visiting, I've been here for work before. Got sent to Boston, and that was really nice. I'm a huge history buff, so I really like being out here because this is where it started, so.
Could you, um, whether, I know they're reading you.
They're reading.
Even though I sent it to them, maybe talk to them, I, I, I asked all the applicants about, um, I've learned through the years, especially as this department has grown, um, keeping track of all these accounts I have, all the buildings I have, your experience with that kind of management and, and the software behind it.
Okay, um, well, there at the community college, I was the assistant to our grants writer, and she wrote all of the grants for the college, not student loan grants, grants for the college. And she was very good at it, um, and so she brought in a whole lot of, of federal revenue and everything. Um, so involved with all of that, she would be writing the grants, there's obvious budgetary, um, duties that go along with that. And I was her numbers person, that's what I do, she wrote the grants, I did the numbers. Um, and she sent me to a lot of training, that's the training I went to in Boston here a couple of years ago, was on cost principles, uh, learning what is and is not allowable under federal grants, 'cause they're, they're real picky about that, and you have to be careful about your audits and everything. We always passed our audits, so that was good. Um, the, uh, there is one grant in particular that our office was in charge of, and that's the Perkins Four Grant, which was, uh, it's a higher education grant, um, that is to help, well, it goes towards all kinds of stuff. It, it's the whole career pathways, you know, college to career, you don't want to just flounder through college and then try to figure out what you're doing, you gotta start early. Um, which ran into the concurrent enrollment program as well, which was getting high school students college credit while they were still in high school. We had students graduating high school with an associate's degree already, so it was a really good program. Um, but there is a lot of budgetary responsibility with that, um, federal reporting, uh, they break it down. I hate boring people with the, the details of it, but it's broken down into categories, you've got your, um, personnel, your benefits, purchase services, materials and supplies, and then equipment, and of course you had to, was, equipment under the federal grant was, that amount was anything, what do I want to say, fifteen hundred dollars and above? But with the college, it was five thousand above before it came equipment. So you had to know the difference between all that, there's two different reportings on it. Um, and then you had to, there were permissible uses under the grant and required uses for this particular program. I'm talking about one grant here, and we had many all the time. Um, and, uh, you, I had to make sure that the proper funding was coming from, from which use that we had designated, you've got your permissible uses, your, your required uses. And you had to make sure that the money was coming from there, you had to keep track of how much, because when you write out the budget in the beginning, you say, this is how much we're gonna spend on equipment in this area, or for this, we, you know, did a whole dental program, we did a, uh, wind program, we did all kinds of stuff like that. So you had to keep the running total, you had to expend the money by the end of the year. The last thing you wanted to do was give the feds back money, because then you don't get as much the, the next year. Um, so you had to really, and you had your fiscal year cutoff, so you had to make sure that you were, um, meeting all the deadlines and getting everything. I, so I kept track of all that, with all that, and, uh, making sure that that was spent properly and on time. Um, I had to interface with our accounting department, our business services department, um, our purchaser personnel, because there were other grants that we would get where there was personnel hired, and there was a whole separate issue that went with that. Um, everything was kept, I did on Excel, uh, that's where all my spreadsheets were, everything is on Excel. So I have a whole lot of experience with that, um, very proficient at use of it, you know? Um, access database, I had to keep a, a large database, and, and this is kind of switching gears from the grant part over to the concurrent enrollment, I was pretty much coordinator for that program. And, um, it was a database of about five thousand students, and I had to keep track of all that, and there's a whole lot more going on, so, if you have any questions. I was a busy girl at that position.
Does anybody, uh, have any questions? Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Will. Can you talk a little bit about, um, the accounting end on filings and stuff like that? Your ability to work with, um, managing the money end of it, and that end and being accountable for that? I know you're talking a lot about the grants that you were involved with.
Right.
Probably in particular that of how that transpired, and what your responsibilities were towards that.
Right, um, and, you know, if I can go back into, um, prior to the college and everything like that, I had spent five years, uh, and I will address that, I had spent five years, um, I do have a good accounting background. Um, let's see, if you want to go back, I gotta really think, how far back were we going? Um, back in California, I was an accounting clerk for an import-export company. And I did all their accounts receivables on that, they actually taught me accounting on the job training, and that was the best way for me to learn. Um, and I did all the accounts receivable, um, payment application, some collections, I didn't like doing that part too much. But, um, uh, there was a lot of the account, the general ledger, that's, I did payroll for the week, and then the general ledger, month-end adjustments, closings. When I came out here, I became full-charge bookkeeper for a law office, and I was completely in charge. They had five different bank accounts, there, you know, there is your operating account, money market account, the trust account, then he opened up, the, the lawyer, his office, he opened up two separate businesses, had nothing to do with the law firm, and so those each had an account, and I had to take care of those two. So you're keeping five accounts, and you've got to do all the reconciliation. I did all the, um, accounts payable, accounts receivable on that, um, you know, paid all the bills when they were due, took in the money, did the client billing, all that stuff.
Okay, thank you, um, one more question, and, um, you're aware of the position that we have as just a nineteen-hour position?
Mm-hmm.
We have it on here as a temporary position because of some ongoing issues. Um, you are aware of that, and you understand what the obligations are, are there?
Yes.
Could be short-term?
It could be short-term, could be long-term, yeah.
And your thoughts on that?
I'm looking, I, I, I'm looking for permanent full-time work, I am. The job market, and, you know, and that's just me being honest, I'm out there looking for permanent full-time work. Um, the job market's proven a little more difficult out here than it is in Wyoming. You've got a lot more competition. I've taken into consideration, to be perfectly honest, I've had two other interviews last week, I interviewed three, three different places all on the same day, this was one of them. And I sat there and I was thinking, and you've got a way out. Location, commuting, the cost of that, the, uh, the money, uh, uh, obviously, you know, there's gonna be that. But you also have to weigh out, and this is what I've learned in the past, is you have to weigh out, how happy are you gonna be in a per, in a certain position? Is the money really gonna be worth it or not? And, uh, to be absolutely honest, I've been in positions where the money was not worth it, because you're not happy. So I had to do some soul-searching, uh, and see, would this be, uh, do I really want to go after the money? Or would I want to do something like this? Um, and I choose this, to be honest, I choose this, that's why I'm, I'm here tonight. This is a small town, it's close to home, I'm here in ten minutes, um, it's involved in the community, it, it's keeping things local, and I would, uh, love to be a part of it.
Thank you very much. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions from anyone?
Ask my question.
If I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do you have any, uh, forecasting, uh, background, um, in community development, development and planning?
No, I'm sorry, I do not.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? If you were chosen, when could you start immediately?
Tomorrow.
That's not soon enough, but that's all right.
Yeah, yeah, I, I am not currently working, and that's why I, I need to get to work, um, for sanity reasons, as well as, as, you know, everybody's got to work, so.
Any other questions from anyone? All right, thank you, you have an impressive, yeah.
Good luck.
I'm hoping, uh, this appointment, I don't know if I mentioned this, if I may, uh, at the, uh, in, or initial interview, but this appointment is technically an appointment by the town administrator.
Right.
So we'll be talking to him tomorrow.
Right.
Uh, hopefully making a decision, and I promise to call each of the candidates regardless of the decision.
Right, just so that you know, and that's always appreciated.
You got it.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time this evening.
All right, um, the next one's Kathy Kay.
Hello.
Good evening, could you tell us about yourself?
Myself.
Of them, I know. Who's there?
Um, I've been in the area off and on during my life, I was born and lived in Marshall, then moved out to Arizona, 'cause my father was from there, and now my mother's been living in Duxbury for about twenty-five years now. And, um, I've been back in the area for just over a year, about a year and a half now, I was living out in the Berkshires. Um, so I was working at the Red Line in there. I was, started out as a waitress and worked my way up to accounts payable clerk full-time. And so I kept my hand in the waitressing though, for a bit of diversity. And, um, I did graduate with a Bachelor's of Arts from, in history, from Oregon State University, but that's not a very profitable career in which to work. But I have a very strong artistic background, as well as administrative background, uh, so I've got sort of, uh, multiple interests, which is one of the reasons why I'm looking for a part-time job. Um, I, the last year, I've been working as a temporary assignment through Account Temps at, and I was working at Party Light in Plymouth Industrial Park, I was just working in the, uh, Supply and Demand Department, mostly looking at numbers, keeping track, looking at, uh, data forecasts, inventory, stock, demand, and supply, and just working with the different databases, updating the inventory. And so then at, um, the Red Line Inn, as the accounts payable clerk, we were working with over two hundred vendors, we had three different properties, all of which had their own ledger and journal entries and, um, record-keeping. And then before that, I was working as the Student Financial Services Coordinator down at Eurythmy Spring Valley, which, at which I was also a student, which is why I was down there, studying an artistic, um, form of movement. And there I worked with the students and, um, as the liaison, setting up their loan payments, their tuition schedules, making all the receivable deposits, record-keeping of all those transactions, doing the payables. And, let's see, um, so, and then I was also, I've had various administrative assistant positions, where I've done the secretarial and the administrative correspondence. I work with Microsoft Outlook, um, keeping track of schedules and correspondence. I'm not sure what else you would like to know.
Were you looking for more of a, uh, full-time position or a part-time position?
I'm not actually, because of my other interests, I, I, right now, I'm very much working in the gardening. Um, my mother's got an acre of land, and I'm, I would love to sort of have my own little organic garden, homestead, and that's very time-consuming, as I'm sure most of you know. And I'm also there as sort of a care assistant for my mom for anything she needs, so I'm sort of the dog's body around the house. So, part-time is actually what I'm looking for.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I just think it's extremely interesting that you both went to the same-named high school in different states.
Me?
Really? The high school?
What was the name?
Calhoun High.
Oh, my god.
Wow, I didn't notice that.
Mine was in Phoenix.
It's too funny.
That one comes up. What year did you grad?
Wow.
Detail, it's all about detail.
I've looked at these resumes quite a bit.
That was the job application, that wasn't on the resume.
I had them both.
Oh, okay.
Anybody else have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna ask you the same question that I asked, uh, the previous applicant. Um, you realize that this is a part-time position that might not be here in a couple of months, and I just wanted to know how you felt about that, what, what your future goals would be or what have you?
Um, as I said, the part-time is what I'm looking for, the temporary, that's fine, because the aspect of just getting to work in this environment and learn about the happenings in, in the few months that would be, would be fabulous, um, experience, 'cause I've wanted to get involved with local town governments and find out how the small towns operate. And, and I'm interested in development, especially at this day and age. Um, and as I said, I've signed up with Account Temps, so the temporary possibility is not a problem.
Okay. Anyone else? Yeah, go ahead, Rose.
The question, I'd like to ask you the same question, do you have any forecasting background in community development and planning?
I do not.
Thank you.
And when could you start if you were, uh, chosen?
Immediately.
Immediately.
My job, my assignment ended Friday, so the timing was really different.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, and I know Tara's still here, uh, Kevin, as I told you in the interview, five of the, for nineteen hours are with the Water Commission. And Kevin here is a Water Commissioner, I don't know if you have any question of either of them? Is that all right, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Maybe up there. I know, I apologize, I just put it together here, you know?
You know.
Thrown into the fire.
Yeah, really. Again, this is a, a nineteen-hour position, but five of it is gonna be for the Water Commission, and, and, and basically what it's gonna be doing is, it's gonna be money in and money out. And, and that's, that's basically what it is. Most of the time, we take our own notes and, and do our own minutes, and we've, we've done, been doing that for quite a while to, as a way to kind of s, cut down on the need for clerical help. But the one thing that we really need is, is somebody to come in and make sure that the bills for the, for the, for the water go out, so that we can, so that we can have a, uh, the money coming in, and also to kind of collect our bills, because as a, as a, as a business, we accumulate bills, it's a, it's an enterprise fund, so it's, it's, we have to run an awful lot like a business. So I, I just want to make sure that you, you would both be comfortable with, with doing that kind of a thing.
Oh, certainly.
It sounded, it sounded like they had a pretty good background, if not, so, you know.
I wanted to give you a shot.
That was, yeah, that was, that was gonna be part of the deal, so. No, I'm, I'm not, so, good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you.
So, you'll both hear from me tomorrow.
Thank you both very much.
Unless the town administrator has another idea I'm not aware of, but I don't think so. But it's his decision, it's not the board's, it's not mine, it's his, okay?
Good luck, Kathy.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go to, uh, Planning Board Notes, anyone have anything they would like to, uh, say or discuss?
Yes, thank you. Um, the Redevelopment Authority met last night, and we had, um, the owner from Semantics, I'm gonna get this wrong, his corporation, um, Mr. Stephen Dewhurst came in and talked to us a little bit about his proposed gift to the town, on, uh, the monitors, and how that would be able to help and give more information to the residents of the town, and also be able to help boards, committees, and just, uh, employees of the town, whether it became from training or, um, being able to interact with, say, our town engineer, or, uh, on the Redevelopment Authority would be the, uh, our attorneys. If they couldn't get here, we could, and I know I'm gonna mess this up, so Steve, don't kill me over this, um, be able to interact of, with them on the big-screen TV back and forth.
Skype?
Is similar to Skype, which is, which was great. And the, the greatest thing I liked about it, and, and just from one who's been... And the, the greatest thing I liked about it, and, and just from one who's been, past four or five months, been involved a lot with the town at Dennis, there, and you know, I've talked about this before, that their website and their interactive outreach to the community and having the ability to have up on a big screen our, our plans at the Planning Board and different information, different documents, and Jack being able to interact on the screen to point that out. Not only, because we have the documents in front of us, but the people at home don't see that. And I really liked that end of it. I know that the selectmen have tabled the discussion on that and somehow they, they tied that in with remote participation. But I think that if we can look beyond that, and I'd love to have Steve to come in and talk to us about it a little bit. I think that you guys would really appreciate the technology and especially when, when it comes to the work that we do here. I know as a Redevelopment Authority member, it, it would be awesome to be able to have that ability to reach out to our attorney or some consultants or whatever on projects that we have going on. And to have, if, if we couldn't get her here in time, because we pay for her to travel down here. And our engineers, we pay them to, as they travel up from Rhode Island, to come here to our meetings and then we pay them to go home. That would cut some of our costs. And if we're talking about some costs and stuff and being able to interact that way and still be able to have, which I think is the most important part of this whole new, new way of looking at things. The outreach to the community is huge. People at home will be able to see the documents right on the screen of their TV and it'd be clear. I mean, we can do the best that we can with a projector and stuff like that. But I, I know that everybody here, when we look at, you know, the budgets and all that other stuff, you can't see it. Even when we're here in the audience, you can't see it, even with glasses on. It's very difficult and to understand it and to be able to interact of that way, I think it's a great option. I was wondering if we could entertain that here and have Steve come in and basically talk a little bit about it. Not trying to step on anybody's toes here or anything. I think it'd be a valuable asset for this board and also for the citizens to understand exactly what's ongoing in the town. When we make decisions, why we're making these decisions. Because people are here afterwards. I didn't really understand what, what you guys were talking about. But now it'll be right there on a screen and people can see that right at home, nice and clear. I thought you did a great job.
We wouldn't have to use it for, as remote participation.
No, but I think that, you know.
But in some ways, we could with engineers.
I think it would help immensely, like say that Sean couldn't get here. If he had a prior commitment that his commitment was running late. But we had a, an important process that was going on here. In that, you know, we rely on Sean's ability to bring information to this board and represent us. That's why we pay him. And for him to be able to, I guess, Skype in, I guess, or whatever they call it.
FaceTime.
But able to be right in there and at the meeting where we can just say, okay, you know, Sean, give your presentation. But he'd be giving it here and we could watch him give the presentation. Everybody in the audience would be nice and clear to see it. But most important would be the people at home would be able to really get a good grasp on what it takes for, and why we pay these people what we pay. And I think in the long run, especially for this board, the ability to save just a little bit of money, and I don't know what that would be, would be huge.
If I may, I believe Mr. Dewhurst was donating this. Donating the screen and some of the electric, I don't have.
From what I understand, from his presentation that he gave us last night at RDA, his plan and his gift from Semantics, which is his company, was to outfit this, this room here in meeting room number three downstairs where.
A huge screen?
Where the RDA meets, a huge screen, also with, he had talked about this monitor.
Close-up projector, it's not the, what they call it.
It's a little bit beyond my scope of how, but the way he was presenting it, I know a lot of the towns are doing this, and most, most of the time, and I talked with the town planner at Dennis about this. The hardest part for them was, is not getting over, you know, the town wanting to do it, but was the funds to equip.
Exactly. And I believe he was donating this equipment to the town.
He was donating this as a gift to the town.
Town, right.
For a better outreach for our community. Now, we've done many, many community forums. And that was basically stemmed on an outreach to engage the public and make them more aware of what were going on. We, we did it more on, on just, there was so much going on with the potential of a North Calva Water District, a new water system, and trying to draw business and everything from the IDC and stuff. And I honestly think that really engaged our community. We had plenty of people that were invested in that and they knew what we were talking about. And we went to town meeting. People were very well-engaged. They knew what was going on. This is just another asset, I think, that first of all, it's a great tool in, in my mind for our board. And for like the Conservation Department and probably, you know, ZBA or something like that. Where they're making pretty critical decisions. But I think it would be very useful for the selectmen because they could present different items that are important to us. Not everybody goes to town meeting. It's boring.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, it would benefit this town in many ways on many levels.
But I think, I, I would like to present that to you guys and see what your thoughts were. Maybe inviting Mr. Dewhurst in, that he can maybe give somewhat of a presentation to this board where we could look at it in what aspects of we think, because just Will saying that, it's great, is beyond that.
Do we need to make a motion for that?
I don't think so. I think it's just a verbal thing from us and we could really reach out to.
Invite him, Mr. Chairman, once, yeah.
Oh, I think it's a good idea, yeah.
If I can add, I, I said this at the Redevelopment Authority, I'm glad Kevin's here. At the last Water Commission meeting, they were negotiating a contract, ready to sign it. And the parties were in Florida on business. And we were using my cellphone.
Yeah.
And it was brought up. If the projector was there, it's not about remote participation from an open-meeting law standpoint. What Will's talking about is just an ease of communicating.
Yeah.
And this is the way all town halls are going.
Yes.
And, and to have this donated.
Is huge.
I mean.
It's easier than trying to get everybody in the same room.
Yeah, not all the time, but yeah.
Sounds like a win-win situation for.
I mean, just think, you could have John Bullrose in here once in a while on the screen. Instead of paying him an hour each way, how much does he get an hour?
We could have utilized.
That's three hundred bucks.
We could have utilized it when one of our members was out of town and for this, for one of the.
Well, that's remote participation now. That's a little, you need to pass stuff.
Well, I don't want to get into that, but I'd like to get into the point of, of, of the information and, and reaching out to the community. Letting them, I, I really think, and I, and I think that the proof has already been shown with the community forums is that if we engage the community a little bit more and be able to, if they can sit in the comfort of their own home and exactly know what's going on, this town will, will move even more than what it's doing now.
Will flourish, exactly.
So, it's my thoughts anyways. I, I think it's a great asset, so.
I'll invite him.
Thank you.
I don't know what's scheduled, but the next meeting?
That would be good. It would, especially, it would help people go into town meeting, the, you know, for like the solar bylaws and the overlay maps we had and zoning changes.
That would have really helped.
At least if you could see these things before the meeting, see them on TV, you'd have a, a much better understanding.
So, every, I'd have a laptop and right up there, every agenda item would pop up there. The Form A, application, then the plan, then the resumes, and then whatever, the signs. So, everybody can see the sign.
Right, right. Yeah, yeah, we're limited right now on what the audience can see when, when they view this show. I think it's a great idea. So, let's do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have, my notes.
Anybody else would, would like to, to say anything tonight? Okay, we'll go to planners' notes.
I have a few things. Couple of things about development going around. I am told that the Bridgewater Savings Bank was closed on. There's an attorney moving and a local attorney is opening his offices there.
That is excellent.
Norfolk Power, it looks like they're moving forward with a sprinkler system on the parcel next to the Kelleher parcel. I'm getting a lot of interest in the Holmes property, which is across from Eagle Gas. Mr. Holmes passed away a year or so ago and his family's been trying to sell it. And it seems like Servpro is pretty interested and may enter into an agreement if they can come to terms. I'm also told that Carver Auto Sales was sold to a car dealer, though there was a lot of interest in that parcel. But I don't know who. Agway, as I think I told you, needs to get out of their, out of their building in a year or two. And they're looking at the property, it's Jack Williams's property next to Carver Auto Glass. It's still waiting on Carprianato, though the assessor's office told me today that Carp, you know, they're under a purchase and sale with Vinnie Nacera. And the assessors told me that they've approached her about trying to get some tax relief, what, until they build on it. I don't know exactly what they meant. They didn't approach me. So, that's kind of what's going on. Two other things. Ed, as you know, has resigned from the Planning Board, but he's technically still a member of the Community Preservation Committee. He's your, now that he's not a Planning Board member, he's your representative. And I believe he's gonna resign from that as well for the same reasons. So, you might want to think about if anyone wants to participate on the board. And if none of you five want to, then we can, you can reach out to the public and see if someone will represent that for you. But he hasn't resigned yet, but that's coming. And it may be at your next meeting. I thought you should know that. And the last thing is, as you, the only zo, the only zoning amendment on the annual town meeting is the zone change for Makepeace and Ocean Spray. However, there are four citizen petitions for zone changes and they all have to do with accessory apartments. So, you will be required by law to have a public hearing. So, that's coming. I just saw them today. It's mostly definitions. I, I, you know the, the situation. I don't have to tell you. That's what I got.
All right, we go on to the approval of the minutes of February nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen.
Just a question.
Yes, go ahead, Rosemarie.
They have President Kevin as an alternate. Wasn't Kevin a member at?
Was that your first meeting, Kevin?
I think it was.
It was.
He was.
Pardon me?
Yes, it was.
I'll make these changes.
That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of things under B where it says Owen's Point. It should be Bowman's Point. Just a couple of them.
Oh, yeah. I can make these, don't worry about it.
That was the only thing I saw for anything that might have been off the beat. Other than that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of February nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen, as amended, please.
There's a motion, there's a second?
I was in present.
Second.
We have a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
All right, correspondence.
Do I abstain or?
Yes.
Oh, and we have one abstention.
I'd like you to take the time to take this out of your pack and take it home with you. This is, I, Bruce and I went to Serped last week and they had a very brief presentation on zoning reform bill. This is like the fifth one in a row for the legislative session, but they think that this one's gonna pass. And I want you to take a look at it. It has to do with how we deal with Form As, how we deal with exemptions, agricultural, and all the like. And I, I don't know what it's gonna end up looking like at the end if it gets passed, but it's something that I think as Planning Board members, you'll have to deal with if it does pass. So, I just want you to take it home, take a look. I'm not asking you to do anything. Midnight reading, that side reading. You'll be up there.
All right, so that's it for correspondence. So, we go on to Office of Planning and Community Development's Secretarial Position Discussion and Possible Recommendation. Well, I thought both of these ladies were very qualified and I was impressed by both. I don't know if anybody would like to make any comments. I guess, you know, Kathy Kay, very well-qualified. And, you know, there's pluses and minuses to, to both people. You know, Kathy was looking for a part-time job. She seems very qualified in the, in the business end. And she, and she was looking for a part-time job, so, so that's great. The other lady, Tara, was very, very well-qualified. And she had grant-writing abilities, experience, you know. I guess the only downside would be that, you know, she was.
Looking for a full-time.
She was maybe looking for a full-time job, you know, whereas, but they were, I was impressed by both.
Mr. Chairman, I read, I read both applications and resumes prior to our meeting and I was kind of, in my mindset on, I liked Kathy. And there was, on, you know, on paper tells a lot, but it doesn't really tell what's really true. And sometimes as being an owner of a couple of businesses, you gotta go on gut feelings and everything. So, I've always had this way of picking out different categories for different positions where I think is extremely important. And I rate them one to ten as we go through. I do believe that both of these people are very well-qualified. One person is more qualified than the other one, in my opinion, a little bit over the top. But again, we're looking at a position that is very demanding. It eats up a whole lot of time and has a whole lot of steps. And whether it's accounting or it's accountability or it's paperwork or it's, you know, different type of filings and different programs that go through the director's office that has different pieces to the puzzle that have to be followed up with. There's a lot of different aspects other than just, you know, a planning board meeting or something like that. There's other entities that fall into play. So, I was very impressed with both applicants. As I went and I, and we did the interviews, I look at, you know, percentage of person's knowledge, their abilities. I look at management abilities. I look at the accounting aspect because in this position, we, we need that a lot. There's different issues that have to fall in, even like, you know, our, our and I funds that we're always struggling with all the time. You know, just trying to keep up to date with those and stuff. You know, I look at the presentation, how the people present themselves and how they, they talk back and forth and how they engage us as, as, you know, applying for that. And then their involvement in something that works in this job description. How they were involved in it and stuff like that. So, on those couple of bases, Tara and my viewpoints had more points. She was more qualified in my point aspect. Then we came to the point, and I, and I really think that this was the tipping point for me, was it's a nineteen-hour position, but five of those hours are for the North Calva Water District. North Calva Water District is a business. This business is up, it's running, it's, it's cranking. It has accountability not only for, you know, the water aspect and the quality of water, but the, the contracts that they have in place, negotiations when it comes to anything from bediments and emergencies that are on tap and contractors, and it just goes on. If I had to pick somebody that would be able to handle that much paperwork and accountability and, and the accounts and the payables and all that other stuff. You know, Tara had a lot broader experience for that, that made me feel more comfortable. And like I said, I was.
I was, I wasn't there before the interviews, but it really was the tipping point for me. So if I had to recommend somebody for the town administrator, I'd, I'd, I'd have to recommend Tara. There is that downfall, that she wants a full-time position. And I understand that. And, you know, every time we go through this process, and I think this is our third, fourth?
This is my fifth.
Fifth, so. And then there was one, one previous to that, that Jack wasn't involved in that, I was involved with, who'd been on the board so long. No matter who we pick, it'll be the wrong one. But we have to make the best judgment call that we can. And you gotta be comfortable with what's gonna be the best for the town, I guess, in a whole, to look at both entities. Because we're not just hiring somebody or recommending hiring somebody for this board, it's for the, uh, North Calva Water District. So I guess for the better asset for the town, in my opinion, would be Tara. That's all I got.
Anybody else?
If I may.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, ask Mr. Hunter a question. How much of, um, that job is required to, to be applying for the grants that, that you run on all your boards?
Yeah, there's, you know, believe me, there's nothing. The, the main part of this job is keeping the, the accounts running and keeping the accounting office happy. That's the main part of this job. And, and, you know, organizing the office, organizing me and obviously taking minutes. That's the fourteen hours. The five hours is, um, Kevin said, is taking in bills, paying bills.
And it's not writing grants?
No. I mean, I.
Well, I just wanted to know that part because I, I know that Tara looked very diversified in that. And I'm absolutely on board with what you just said, with hes, with hesitation because, you know, Kathy fits the job.
I agree with that point.
Can do the job.
And, and, and you know, to your point, Kevin, I think that that's a great point to make. I think Kathy, my gut would Kathy was all day long, and I said this to Jack the other day, this, this woman, I think will grow with us. I think is a perfect fit for us in that end of it. Does, did I miss something? I don't know.
I don't think.
But I, I.
Think so, no.
I do like the idea that she knows that it's a part-time job. She's not striving, but I will say this about her, and this, this is something that really stuck out on me. This woman, in her resume, she went to work for an account temp, um, so that way she had a job. That shows self-motivation to me. That shows me gusto. Somebody who's not just gonna sit by the wayside and be, I hate to use the word, entitled to this. She's a go-getter. She has that effort to it. And that's really, before tonight's interviews, what really got me with her. And I looked at it and I told Jack, I goes, this sticks out my head huge, huge. But, you know, the other abilities, and maybe I'm just overthinking this position. Um, you know, I'll go with what we think's the best for a recommendation.
And does the recommendation for this position come from us as a board?
Yeah.
Balanced with Jack, what Jack, you know, feels that is brought to the table as far as their positions are concerned?
You know, in the past, it's really been, I've had a board or two member, or one or two members of the board interview with me, with the town administrator. But because this was temporary and it's in flux, I really wanted some backup on this decision.
Ultimately, how, how do you feel each of them would grow with you in that position?
It's interesting, and I've told at least a couple of you who've asked me, um, I was leaning toward Tara before the, this interview, and I did not ask her about the part-time. I mean, I told them all that it's part-time and that it's temporary, but she never told me till tonight that she's looking for a full-time job. And what resonated with me is I've, this would be my fifth secretary. Three, other than the one I inherited, who left for personal reasons, um, not town hall reasons. But the other three left because they got full-time jobs with benefits.
Yeah.
And I am very concerned about that. Um, so, I, you know, I could work with either one of them. I, I just don't want to go through this again. So, uh, you know, I think they're, they're very, both of them are top-notch and they're both gonna do a good job here. If I, and I guess if you want my opinion, I'd pick Kathy, only because of tonight.
If I may.
Yeah, go ahead, Rosemary, please.
They're both very, very qualified, as we all have said. Um, Kathy is definitely self-motivated. She started as a waitress and worked her way up to accounts payable. So she strives. She is only looking for a part-time job, whereas Tara is looking for a full-time job. So based on listening to both of them and what they had to say, I would have to go with Kathy. Thank you.
You have anything?
I was leaning towards Tara until.
That statement.
She came out, yeah.
Yeah, I, I.
You don't want to keep going through this every couple?
It took me by surprise a little. I said, I asked my, when you said that, I said, why didn't I ask that? And I didn't know she was looking. She already has two other interviews.
It was nice that she was honest.
Yeah, it was. No, I think she is an, I think the, you won't go wrong with either one, other than that.
No, I can't see. I can't see how you can go wrong. I, I think Tara has, I, I liked her. And, and not only that, she has a lot of the skills for the office, the, the software that, that she uses and everything too. Kathy may have to learn some of those things. I, I'm not sure. She doesn't have all the software. But I mean, I, I think that she, she'd do very well too. The encouraging thing is that she was looking for a part-time job, whereas Tara was looking for a full-time job. So I guess, though, that's the, that's the basic thing you, you have to think of if you wanna.
Mr. Chairman, can you ask the water commissioner?
Water Commissioner, well, since he's been up once, I suppose he could come up again.
He's got some teeth into this one.
Never thought this was gonna happen, did you?
No, I didn't. I, 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 I wanna agree with, with what Will said. I mean, I, I thought Tara was very impressive. But having been through the, the, having to hire people over and over and over again, we've done, we've done that a few times on, on the water commissioners as well. If you can find somebody who's willing to work the hours that you have available, you know, that, that, that says a lot, you know. So I, I think I have to concur with everybody's, with what everybody's been saying up here, so.
So Kathy it is then, huh?
I make a recommendation then, Mr. Chairman, through you, um, that, that we make a recommendation to the, um, town administrator to offer the position to Kathy.
I second that.
And, oh, do we, we don't have to vote on this, do we? Do we want one vote?
I would like it.
Okay, okay. Uh, we have a motion in a second. Uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
I wish we could hire on both.
Oh, I know.
It would be nice.
You, you know, it's, it's just unbelievable today how, uh, my wife has gone through things like this at, at college, the college she works for, and people applying for positions that you would, you would, and, and they're getting college graduates. They, I mean, people that are just way overqualified.
Well, maybe, I know that the, the tax collector's looking for another position. Maybe Tara might think of that. You know.
Is that full-time or?
Yeah, if he has it his way.
I don't think that was a, for the record.
Oh, sorry.
Oh. All right. So I guess the next thing is adjournment.
Motion, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.